First of all, thank you everybody for being here. I'm Melvin Edwards with Chairman of the General Government Committee. I see that we have Lisa Clausen, who generally represents the carpenters union and is a good friend to the REO in the city on labor issues. We are joined also, I see, by my colleague, Counselor Victor Davila, Counselor Jesse Letterman, as I had noted earlier, President of the City Council Marcus Williams, and our Election Commissioner Gladys Oyola, and are the attorney for procurement and advisor to the council, counselor, I mean attorney Theolies. And we have one guest, as I can see, which is Juan Lattori. We want to welcome him as well. We always want to thank Focus Springfield for their assistance, and so let's just get started. And the first item we're going to discuss will be, which shouldn't require a lot of information, but the poet laureate. It was an ordinance that was put forward to establish a youth member. Jesse, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of time, I'll keep it very brief. As I mentioned at our last regular meeting when the council was kind enough to pass first step on the youth poet laureate ordinance initiative that came about through conversation with the current poet laureate of the city of Springfield, Magdalena Gomez, who, you know, has done a lot of work with young people in the city and felt that it was important for the city to also recognize young people through the arts and had approached me about the development of this ordinance. The original poet laureate was established through ordinance by the city council, and this ordinance would establish now a youth poet laureate who would be appointed by the mayor in coordination or consultation with the past and current poet laureates of the city. The individual would be no more than 21 years of age at the time of appointment. They would need to reside in the city. It would be an honorary position, so no compensation would be required for the youth poet laureate, and it would allow a two-year term for that individual to serve in their capacity. So hopeful that we can continue to push that forward. I think it's a great and uplifting piece of legislation during these trying times, and very grateful to everybody for their support on it.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. I don't believe that we even need to make a vote on it. We can just, I can make a report, a committee did, it was commented, questioned, and we had description. I believe it passed unanimously at the last meeting anyway, and it shouldn't be controversial, and it should be something easily passed, second and third step at the next appropriate time. That being said, if there's no objections, I'd like to jump right into the issue related to the elections, since we have a department head here in Gladys. We always appreciate her time and thank her and her staff for the work she does. Counselor Davila is the most recent sponsor of this ordinance. The ordinance, I believe, was originally crafted by Counselor Michael Fenton and many years ago. And it's, so I'm going to ask Counselor Davila, I think I'm pretty conscious of the details of it, but as the most recent sponsor of it, Counselor Davila, would you like to speak on it?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to everybody. And you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chair. I am the latest sponsor to bring back this issue that, in my opinion, needs to be resolved. Counselor Fenton, by the way, the other cosponsor of this legislation, it is my understanding, is trying to join the meeting. As we all know, we, the city council, we had the pleasure and the serious task of recently replacing Counselor, now State Senator Alan Gomez, and in his place, Counselor Commissioner Gomez was appointed. I myself, with many other counselors, do believe that this grave responsibility really belongs to the people, for they are the ones that decide who should represent them in the government, not the city council. So with that being said, the difference with this particular special act discussed with Counselor Fenton, if I just may go through some of the highlights briefly, Mr. Chairman, as follows. The vacancy special legislation, which will need to be signed by the mayor, applies to ward seats only. It is my belief that you could, making argument that there are large positions, though that person that comes in sixth place has garnished enough votes throughout the city to represent the city as a whole. The ward seats, however, I do believe that the people, I myself and along with other councils believe that the people want to be represented by the winner of that election. So this vacancy applies only to ward seats. The city clerk, in the event of a vacancy, the city clerk shall notify the election commissioner within 15 days of say vacancy occurring. If there's more than 210 days, we will hold a primary election. We will hold an election if there are more than more than 210 days, the seat will, the seat will remain vacant. If we don't have more than two candidates, the election will be canceled. There's two plus one, we don't have more than two people running.
But we're adding another one to that part.
Okay, and then the other act is that, the other item is that the ones passed by, signed by the mayor and passed by the state house, it will show take effect immediately. Those are the highlights of the legislation, and I see that Counselor Fenton joined the call. I don't know if Counselor Fenton would like to add anything else.
Thank you, Victor. Counselor Fenton, thank you for joining us. Victor just gave us a very brief description, basically stating that it was reflect ward counselors only 15 day from time of vacancy notices to be sent to the clerk. And then he gave a description of the timeframe for either a, the triggering of an election or the seat staying vacant. Can you or would you like to comment or add anything to this? And you were acknowledged as being the original sponsor and drafter of the ordinance, and Counselor Davila as being the most recent presenter or sponsor.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think that was terrific, Victor. The only other two things I would add are that this does not anticipate a referendum, which we had previously discussed, so this would just be an act by the council that then requires the Massachusetts State Legislature to approve it as a home rule petition. And also, just to point out, it only applies to ward city counselors and does not apply to district school committee members or any other elected position. It's just ward city counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioner Oyola, would you please, well, Jesse, would you mind if I talk?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. So Commissioner, could you comment on what has been proposed?
You know, this is something, as Counselor Fenton said, he's been working on since over five years at this point. So I am 100% behind this. The one question I do have is the reasoning, I guess, for not including the district school committee members in this, because I think we may have issue with that in filling those vacancies as well, because it has happened before when a school committee man McFadden stepped down, they had to appoint someone to fill the vacancy. So I'm just curious as to why one and not the other.
You want to take that, Victor?
Sure, if you want. Thank you, Commissioner Oyola. Thank you for the question. Yes, absolutely. It's something that is on a radar. We felt that historically, it is more likely than not that there's going to be an opening in the city council more often than the school committee. We felt that we need to pass something to start acknowledging that the people are the ones who have the supreme power and decision-making when it comes to see who's going to represent them in the government, and so we started with the ward seats. But the city, excuse me, the school committee is something that we are looking at as well. It's something that, Commissioner, I do believe that we need to engage our colleagues on the school committee to bring them into the process. And we felt that we, in the meantime, we need to be proactive, and we felt that this is the best course of action to start at the ward seats, to sort of get the ball rolling.
Okay. I would like to just give my support to have that hopefully be folded into it as soon as possible, just because of the length of the term for school committee is so much longer that there, I think there may be more likelihood that a school committee person may kind of drop off in between that, and this would be perfect in filling that vacancy because there are four years instead of the two, like the city council.
If I may, Commissioner, when is the next regular scheduled election for the school committee?
That would be this year. So it would be this year and then not again for four years.
I thought there were staggered terms.
There, they were before ward representation, but that was changed in the language of ward representation. So all school committee people run on the same term. They're not staying staggered any longer.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, that's something that will not be opposed if you see fit to later on starting holding discussions specifically on the school committee. I would be more than willing to work on that as well.
Actually, yes. Listening to what the Commissioner has suggested, I'm going to, I'm going to ask to hear from Counsel Letterman, but my thought would be, I know there's some degree of urgency with this, but it should be something that we should perhaps, either myself, Counsel Davila, or Counselor Fenton needs to, should, or I would suggest, have a conversation, would start having a conversation with members of the school committee and their chair. And in fact, I believe the chair of the commission, the committee is the mayor, if I'm not mistaken. So I actually will, either if it's, if it's okay, I would be happy to reach out to the mayor and get that process started. I think that, and then be willing to hold the meeting with their members and their suggestions as quickly as possible. For Counselor Fenton, for the, and perhaps you can answer this question, is that is it a, depending on what they might be suggesting to happen, would it be terribly complex for us to fold it into this piece of legislation?
No, it'd be very simple, and just to be clear, it was a part of the last proposal that I had to include the district seats on the school committee. But given the resignation of Counselor Gomez, I discussed with Counselor Davila the potential for including that, and our consensus was that it would be better to just act initially on the city council and see if we wanted to go back to the school committee later. You know, the urgency, it's not immediately before us. There's no, there's no current vacancy. So I think in the long run, it makes sense to have the school committee district seats be included in this, and Attorney Moore could make that change very easily because it wasn't a prior version. And if Counselor Davila has no objection to that, then I would say we could just make that change and put it on the next agenda.
Would either of you object to me reaching out to the mayor as the chair of the school committee and perhaps to some members of the committee for suggestions and for their comments?
Mr. Chair, I guess I don't have necessarily an objection more than a concern that, you know, to ensure that this does not fall to the crack and we follow through accordingly. You know, as the Commissioner kind of hinted a little while ago, we may be in a same situation deja vu all over again come November. Who knows? So I, it makes sense to include the school committee. I don't profess to have all the answer on this one. I guess we could fold it in, or we can put in two separate legislations. I am up for discussion on that.
Well, I, I will make sure that I reach out the tomorrow then and get something. I don't believe, do we have a meeting Monday? We should have some, I should be able to gab some comment by Monday or when we meet as a reporter, the next time that we need to make a report of the committee. So I'm not that concerned with the urgency, or as you described, it falling between the cracks. There's no reason why this is not that complex. It's not that complicated, and it doesn't require time. It's just a matter of, everything we do is scheduled in two meetings anyway, so this would be the same. So with that being said, and I appreciate comments from the Commissioner. Counselor Letterman, thank you for your patience. Would you like to comment, please?
Certainly. I was actually going to ask the same exact question that the Commissioner asked, and my position is that we should fold it into this ordinance. I think that the principles that drive this ordinance are the same for district school committee members as it would be for ward counselors. And actually, I think there's been almost equal vacancies in both bodies. So I don't think we should set up really a separate system for either body. So I think the conversations with the school committee, hopefully they will agree with the layout that's been presented. But whatever we end up ultimately doing, I think it should be the same for both bodies, and I think we should pass it at the same time. I don't really see the urgency necessarily, although we just had a vacancy. I don't think there's any reason to believe we would necessarily see another vacancy in the near future, and if there is, it is unforeseeable. So I think we should take our time, also because, you know, home rule petitions can take time to work through the legislature, and I think we shouldn't place a burden of two home rule petitions that are roughly the same on the legislative delegation. I mean, representative by the fact that Counselor Fenton, I believe, has seen this legislation pass twice before and never make it through the state house. So I think whatever we send to the state house should be final draft, done, take care of this issue, and move on.
Well, I can assure you, in terms of urgency and dropping to the ball, I'll make sure that I follow up on it as soon as possible and the, with the mayor, and the thing is, is the same ordinance that we're creating just should, it sounds like it should work, just be, just move it right over into them, to the school committee. And the thing is, is just, at this point, it's a matter of courtesy. You know, we're creating legislation for them, so I think they need to have that opportunity to speak on it. So I'll take that up. I'll make sure that Counselor Davila, Fenton, and anybody else, everybody else is made aware exactly what's going on. Counselor, President Williams, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is just in regards to if a special election, given the time drain, is triggered. And perhaps the Commissioner can provide some insight there, but I know there's certainly a cost to having special elections. So I just, in regards to the budget, and your budget particularly, if that were to happen, would you need the city council to, or not the city council, I should say, but would you need an allocation that's reserved for special elections? And if so, does that include the city council at any point?
Ultimately, if it does go through, it could be something that we wrap up or we fold into our bigger budget going forward as kind of, as a what-if scenario in our budget. That would eventually get turned back into the general fund if we don't use it, because it would cost, depending on if it's a district seat, because that would require to, an election in two wards, 16 precincts versus just a regular ward seat, which would only be eight precincts. So there would cost associated, clearly not as much as a regular citywide election, but there would be some money needed to be budgeted, definitely.
Okay, and I'll just add, just because, I should say, well, these scenarios probably are unforeseeable to Counsel Letterman's. We probably would just have to appropriate that in the case that, you know, that amount exceeds what you've budgeted for, correct?
Correct, correct.
We, our guest, Mr. Lattori, you have your hand up. Would you like to comment?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. I don't have the benefit of having the proposed ordinance in front of me. I did see it when it was first introduced to the council for first step. Just a quick question, given the, you know, should a special election be triggered that it would be, you know, potentially as soon as, what would it be, seven or nine months before the next election? Is there any consideration to whether or not the signature requirements would be the same as if, if this was in the course of a normal two-year review, or if it would be changed in every way? Just thinking, you know, with the minimum window of time to hold the special election, if the requirements should be the same as they would be in a normal window where a candidate might have as many as, you know, three months from the time in which nomination forms can be picked up to the time that they need to be certified. It's something you may want to look at if you haven't yet. Appreciate your comments on that.
Commissioner, would you like to, your thoughts on that particular question, please?
It's a valid question. I know that other cities and towns that do hold special elections don't necessarily lower the threshold in terms of signatures gathered, even though the timeframe is shorter. So it would be something that we, the council would have to consider if they want to, you know, have the ordinance go forward. I think that, just in my experience, there is plenty of time to do it in the three months, and I think some candidates do it in as little as a weekend. So it's really on the motivation of the candidate, as far as I can see. But there is an argument that maybe the threshold could be lowered.
Okay. Counsel Letterman, your hand is still up. Is that from before, or you're all set?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? I think I have my marching orders, which is to reach out to the school committee as soon as possible, be prepared for a report to the committee of the whole, at the next regular meeting, and if all possible, depending on when that next meeting occurs or our next regular meeting, maybe even being able to schedule another meeting on this, with this agenda item, including the members of the school committee that might want to comment. But at the very least, I believe that a draft of what is being proposed that would include them should be crafted either by Counselor Davila or Michael Fenton and sent and be circulated so that not only on the council, but to the mayor as the chair and to the members of the committee so that they have an idea of what we're proposing. Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. I don't mind folding into the school committee into the fold. But, Mr. Chair, if I do, if you don't mind, I have a quick comment.
Please.
Thank you. The, I just want to say, Mr. Lattori, a great point, sir. That was a good point about the signatures. Something that honestly was, at least I didn't think about. But I will, how I follow up with Counselor Fenton and the commission specifically on the requirement of the signatures. I think that is a great valid point, Mr. Lattori. Also, I just want to point out that the sense of urgency, I'm not so much concerned about the council itself. I'm concerned more with the House. As Mr. Chair, you said, I'll say several times in this meeting, this Counselor Fenton has brought this before, and along with other counselors, and unfortunately has died. And that concerns me that this is going to die at the Hill. I don't know why. I believe we have a two-year window, but, you know, I do want to get the ball rolling just to acknowledge again and let the people know that, at least we recognize that they have the ultimate decision as to who represents them in the, in the court. That's my sense of urgency. I don't want this to die in the House. I want to give them ample time. And so, but, yeah, it sounds like we have a good plan going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I appreciate your urgency. I believe that it would be accurate to state that myself and a partner that I had many years ago, we were trying to bring the vintage Grand Prix to the city of Springfield, and during the course of that, we recognized or found out that it was illegal to race cars on public streets. We were able to get a piece of legislation to the desk of Governor Deval Patrick in a matter of one week. So, so the thing is, in terms of urgency, I guess it's just depends on the appreciation of the people in the legislature and whether they want to move on something. But at the same time, we don't need to have a duplicate, I'm of the feeling we don't need to duplicate the efforts, and it would be discourteous for us to try to do something and craft something without some insight and from the people most affected, which is, in fact, the school committee members. Urgency is important. We, I think we all got the message, and we will all make a point, sure that that doesn't happen. That being said, if there's no objections, I'd like to move on to the next item, which would be the wage theft. But before I do that, is there any other questions or comments on this particular issue? Hearing none. Wage theft. This is something that's being sponsored by myself and I believe Counselor Brown, Counsel Letterman are involved as well. Jesse, would you like to take the lead on this one as well?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is customary meeting that would take place following first step passage of any ordinance, and this ordinance, as you alluded to, is the wage theft ordinance. This is a piece of legislation brought forward, as you alluded, Mr. Chairman, by myself, yourself, Counsel Brown and Counsel Williams, and I believe we gained some cosponsors on the first round, if I'm not mistaken. Counsel Davila, I believe, co-sponsored along with some other individuals, and Counselor Ramos. And what the ordinance is really aimed to do, as has been discussed in this committee previously, is expand some of the wage theft protections that were put into the ordinances previously introduced by a similar group of counselors, including us, that ensures that individuals who are on public construction projects in the city of Springfield, contractors and subcontractors are not engaged in wage theft against their employees. And as we know, wage theft is particularly endemic in the construction industry as, you know, as a major driver of construction in the region. We want to make sure that the city of Springfield is very clear that we have a zero tolerance policy for individuals who might not properly compensate their employees for the work that is done. And so what this would do is require a couple of things at the time of bidding. It would require an affidavit that the individual contractor or subcontractor has not been debad or suspended. It would require that they have not been found by a Attorney General's office or a court to have been convicted or in violation, I should say, of the wage theft laws of the Commonwealth. It would also require that they be in compliance with proper classification of their employees throughout their time on the job and that they're providing adequate benefits in compliance with state law. And as a part of that, they would need to submit, along with their certified payroll, they would also need to submit a time log for all employees. Again, these are protections that do exist for TIF, individuals that are receiving TIFs or HDIP incentives from the city of Springfield. This would just fold this, this protection or expand this protection to all public construction projects in the city. And then also, if an individual is found to be in violation of any aspect, or a subcontractor or contractor is found to be in violation of any aspect of the ordinance during their time on the job, it entitles the city to certain protections, to either clawback some of the funds, to see the worker, the contractor, subcontractor be suspended until everything is resolved, in that nature. So that is the, that's the ordinance that's before us, did pass first step. I know we did have it sent over to procurement and to the individuals who help monitor and analyze the REO, who would have some responsibility under, and I know Attorney Theolies is here today, so we very much welcome his thoughts. And I know Attorney Theolies previously had actually said there were a couple of tweaks that he was looking to bring, so I don't know if he has those ready to look at today, but I'm certainly available anytime in the next two weeks. We don't have another regular meeting for two weeks at least, I believe. So I'm available anytime to discuss those with him or with the analysts, unless they have something ready today. We're also joined by Lisa Clausen from the carpenters union. They've been very supportive of the ordinance and may want to share some thoughts as well at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Attorney Theolies, you have the draft of what passed first step, your concerns, and could you speak? Particularly, I'm interested in hearing your thoughts on the response to violations, but please start it wherever you think appropriate and sharing.
All right. So full disclosure is, I didn't, I wasn't able to prepare written comments and some things that could be, you know, like Counsel Letterman just said, we can tweak some things, and I think that there, I think I know some of the thoughts, whereas the terminology just needs to be changed around a little bit, and I can certainly, I'm able to do that, especially if I know I got two weeks to work with. There are a few concerns I have. I'm trying to go in order from largest importance to smallest. First one, I guess, would say that we just, we want to be careful that we're saying that contractors, as you know, Counsel Edwards, there's different tiers of different contractors. So there might be a contractor that's sub-sub-sub-sub, like two or three tiers down, and the ordinance as written says that they're jointly, you know, liable if there's a misclassification event, not necessarily a theft per se, but, you know, they're paying somebody a journeyman, or they should have been paying them as an apprentice, or, you know, there's, because that does happen sometimes, and that it is a correctable violation rather. Violation rather than, you know, conviction, if you will. Uh, so you could have a situation where you have like, maybe like a font, I'm just using Fontaine, because they were our last big GC. You know, you have somebody two or three tiers down that screws up, and you know, does that mean Fontaine is suspended for six months or something like that? So I did, I think that we want to be careful about how that's word. I know we have some discretion in the back of it. Uh, the other thing that.
Yeah, one question on that before you jump, because this is helpful. I just want to make sure we're able to get to it all. On the, on that type of a situation that you're describing, would that have resulted in a, in an actual citation or from the AG? Or finding by the court?
So if, if they're on the project, um, I'm, I'm. So again, I've been doing this for ten years. I haven't seen an exact incidence of wage theft that comes to mind. On a city project. I am aware that there is an issue with a contractor that did some city work. That got messed up with UMass Amherst. Um, I think it was a flooring contractor, my memory serves me. And there was a misclassification issue and he had to pay back that stuff. Um, it rarely does it get resolved during the actual construction period. You know, I, I think that there's a look back period where they go back and look at these things and say, you know, you, you paid them X, you should have been paying them Y, and you were pocketing the difference. And I mean, there's nobody in the city is gonna say that's, we shouldn't be attacking that in any possible way and preventing that. Um, I'm, I'm certainly for that. I don't think there's anybody to be against that. I just, I want to make sure that we're not penalizing. The wrong people, I guess. Uh, and I haven't thought of a great way to write that down yet.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that note and we can come back to that one.
Okay, uh, another thing is we want this to be inserted into all the specifications. And again, that's fine. A lot of the stuff that is being, that is in this ordinance is redundant. It's already being done. You know, we, I would never accept a bid from somebody who had been debarred. Things, and, and that's on the general bid form that the city of Springfield uses. Or actually, no, I'm sorry, there, there's an additional form that we have for a debarment that's added on to it. Uh, so a lot of that stuff's already being done. It's not a big deal. However, there is an issue where we don't necessarily bid certain things. So there's different tiers of procurement for one forty-nine, and the first tier is like, just like the thirty B, it's sound business practice. I, I know this is exciting stuff, but they go and they, you know, we, we need them to paint one room, you know, and it's, it's gonna be a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. It's basically anything under ten thousand. We're not really preparing specifications for that. We're kind of just getting like a written quote, and they're putting in a requisition which results in a purchase order. I want to be clear, those are definitely prevailing wage jobs. There's no dollar figure that dictates one prevailing, it's a dollar. You know, you do a dollar of public construction work, you are paying prevailing wage, you better be. And we do insert that information. Uh, that stipulation into the requisition, but there's no forms being passed, if that makes any sense. There's no contract, the purchase order is a contract, but it's not something that's quote-unquote bid. So maybe we can start with like a threshold, put a threshold in there or something like that, otherwise. Work could come to a grinding halt, because a lot of these projects are, are small and I don't think we want that.
Help me understand that piece a little bit more, Theo. Um, the issue is that, uh, what, what would stop them? From on, on a smaller project like that, for example, what would stop them from submitting the, you know, as a part of the purchase order? Submitting the affidavit that they uh have not, you know, the five-year look back and uh, and not, and just, you know. Uh, uh, submitting a payroll or uh hours log.
They do have to submit the payroll. Uh, again, I want to be clear, they are submitting a payroll and usually if, if it's a bigger project with the GC. I'm, I'm, I'm certain that there's already some type of sign in and out log. I don't see that, compliance sees that, that's Che. And uh, Hope, who work with uh councillor Edwards and myself.
Of course.
Uh, for the compliance unit in TJ's office. Uh, it, the reality is, councillor, it's one more form that you're gonna make, uh, the facilities foreman. The Pat Sullivan, uh, you know, project foreman, park, whoever. Get and chase for a contractor to be able to submit their price. Uh, right now, there isn't anything like that. They just say, you know, I'm gonna paint this room for a thousand dollars. And they get a purchase order and go and do it. And again, they, we, we give them blanket wages. Uh, so each project has its own wage rate that follows the project, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's contract based. You know, this is contract number twenty twenty-one oh oh one, and it follows the life of the project. And in cases where it goes more than a year, we actually get updates to update the prevailing wage rates, and we distribute those to the contractors. In the case of these smaller jobs, we actually go through the state DLS, Department of Labor Standards, to give us blanket wage rates. And, and when you're going to go do something that's not large enough to dictate getting its own wage rate. We're allowed to use these smaller wage rates, and we distribute them with the purchase order and those particular circumstances. But those are the only two pieces of paper that go back and forth, other than the payrolls that come in the compliance.
Okay, we'll consider that. Uh, I got it, I got it down.
Uh, and the rest of them are just very small tweaks. Again, I, 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 it's a good idea, you know, and, and no one's gonna say it's not a good idea. It's just in order to make it work with how we do things, it's, I can submit those comments to you.
Yeah, I think uh, we can look at the three big pieces, uh, and then in terms of the smaller tweaks, if you want to just send a red line. Uh, back over to me, uh, then I can, or maybe and copy Tom on it.
Yep, is he the one who wrote this? I was gonna ask.
Yeah, Tom, well, it's a, it's a draft from another community that then Tom amended, Tom wrote up, uh. Yeah, I don't know exactly which town it came from, but uh, but it was a draft. And then uh, Tom edited it uh for our, our use. So copy Tom on the red line, and then on these, uh, these three other issues, um. On these three other issues, I would say we can definitely, we can discuss them today if we want, um, but we might also want Tom for that discussion.
I think that's a good idea, now that, I mean, because I, I was leaning towards he was the, probably the one who wrote this, but uh. If you want to have an, an offline discussion, we can do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I think, um, I'm, you know, I, I personally, and I don't know how other councillors feel. I'm not uh necessarily too concerned with adding an additional layer on the smaller projects, but we can talk about the. Um, implementation of that, and then relative to the, um. Relative to the, uh, actually, these are the same issues. So really, the other issue is just the contractor tiers. And I think, you know, my feeling is if there's, I mean, I, I, I think what we want is we want the general contractors holding their subcontractors accountable. So I think we, we want to make sure that they're, they have skin in the game too, and don't just say, oh, hey, you know. This occurred, it wasn't us, so, so we roll, you know, I think that's the goal of holding them equally liable.
Okay.
Okay, well, it certainly would be better if the country general contractor is the one who's doing the policing. Uh, and that's necessarily the burden was being completely put on the city to be following all these um, issues. Um. Theo, if you wouldn't uh, mind, is there a possibility for us to be prepared, say, in, and a. The week, not this coming week, but the first week in May. I'd like to get a general government committee meeting before the um, next regular meeting. Uh, where I could actually have a discussion on this and hopefully be prepared to discuss the election issue that we were just discussing. Earlier, so um, not to put, I know you have, you're, you're trying to serve multiple, many, many ma- masters. Um, but is you think that if uh I was able to schedule something, say, the week of the, the first week of May? Would that be convenient for you to be prepared to come back and maybe with consultation with attorney Moore?
Yes, councillor Edwards, I, I take a great deal of pride in the amount of construction that the city of Springfield has put out in my tenure. Um, I think we got a lot of good things coming up with some of this infrastructure money that's coming in. And yes, I will commit to that. This is an important issue. It should be done right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If I may.
Yes, councillor.
I just want to point out, and I appreciate that too, Theo, we, we, we really appreciate your help with this, um, because we want to, you know, practically, it needs to be, you know, utilized. So uh, we gotta get it right. I agree. So actually, that would work, because we do actually have a regular meeting May third, but then we have another one May tenth. So we, if we, if we uh worked together uh with Tom through that first week. Um, just to get any, any comments or any uh practical changes that need to happen, uh, then we could hold that, that committee meeting. Um, after that May third meeting, but before May tenth, and then probably have both pieces ready.
That sounds appropriate, and thank you, councillor Letterman. Uh, Lisa, um, would you? I know, you know, you're, you're, uh, you've been uh working on this, uh, almost as, well. Far as, you know, we've known each other for many years now, and I appreciate everything. You are, uh, have been instrumental in everything that we've been doing, doing in terms of the REO and work and labor. Um, do you have any comment or question before I kind of like open it up to others, including my president?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and councillors and Theo and others. Um, I, I appreciate you all, um, working on this issue. It's a really important issue, and we really appreciate council taking it up and the city taking it up. Um, I would just echo uh what councillor Letterman said that, um, you know, the, the challenge that we're trying to address. Um, and that we think is important to address in the tiering um of the subbing is the issue that. Um, often the construction manager or general contractor is aware that. Um, why they're getting such a low bid um for certain subwork, um, that. Uh, that, that contractor has a history of using labor brokers and paying cash wages and having people off the books. Um, and, um, and looks the other way, because there's no, you know, if that contractor gets found guilty of it. It's, there's, there's not, you know, it just gets found guilty of it, and it has no effect on them. And so I do think there is value in the city having um some responsibility that comes to the. Goes up the chain, um, for a contractor that hires a sub that engages in that, in that way. I just took a look at the ordinance again in that regard while the discussion was happening. And the, a first penalty for it happening is, is a six months not doing work, um, which, you know. For a, a CM, it's very unlikely that a, a CM would be doing work within six months. Um, you know, the, the time barred gets longer if they've been found more than once. But, you know, it puts them on guard more to make sure that they um, don't have a contractor that's gonna engage in that way. Um, uh, so urge it to be considered in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, I know you, uh, President Williams, you said you had to leave. Are you, uh, if, if you'd like to comment, I don't think there's anything we're gonna have to vote on, but if you'd like to comment before you depart, uh, this would be a good time, I believe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was just elated to support ordinance and appreciate councillor Letterman for. Um, bringing it to the forefront, and I know there's been a lot of work done with the HDEP and uh similar styled ordinance in the past. Um, but I, I also just want to give a shout out to, to Lisa Clausen and, and the other uh ironworkers and, and folks um in the unions. Because I've learned so much over my uh tenure, just hearing. Um, the details of why this, this type of stuff is important for municipalities like Springfield. Um, so um, that, that education is, is, is invaluable to me, and, and I just want to uh send a shout out to, to her specifically. And her team for, um, just, you know, being on the right side of the issues as it relates to wage theft for, for years. So I'm happy to continue um in this effort uh with this ordinance and things that might come down the pipeline.
Thank you. Okay, um, is any other, we're, we're about ready to wrap up. It's been a pretty efficient meeting. Councillor Davila, did you have a comment that you'd like to make or a question?
Uh, not so much as a question, but uh, uh, just a brief comment. This is something that it's uh good that is happening. Um, I'm still not entirely clear as to what's going on with the policing of this. Uh, because wage theft is still occurring in Springfield, and so we need to nip this on the butt. And I look forward to whatever the end product of this uh ordinance will be, uh, will be, uh, a, a something that, um. People that know that come to Springfield that hear the residents of Springfield know they're gonna be paid for, for a fair wage. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, uh, we are to our guest, Mr. Latari, thank you for attending as well. Uh, it's always nice to see a citizen uh participate and see what we do. Um, I want to thank everybody in attendance. I appreciate everybody's time. Once again, to uh. To our champions that focus Springfield, our sincere gratitude, we can't do this without you. Um, your entire team, uh, we applaud you all, and we thank you. Um, if there are no objections, no other questions, comments, or complaints, or observations. If I've hopefully covered them all, I didn't entertain a motion that we adjourn. And I will second it, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Please be well, be safe and prosper. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Chairman.